Five o'clock hour, I'll call to order the pre-agenda meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, February the 16th, 2021. Adjustments to the agenda, Ms. Jones, can you?
Yes, sir, we do have a few adjustments. The first one is the addition under presentation of special recognitions and awards.
Hold just a second.
And that, I'm sorry.
I need to check in. Marvin, are you able to hear us?
I've been here waiting on you.
Okay.
[laughter]
That's a pretty quick retort. It didn't take seven seconds.
Seven seconds, he's closer tonight.
I think you're ahead of us. Okay.
We have two additions under presentation of special recognitions and awards. The first one is a certificate of recognition of Commissioner Marvin Norman. And the second one is a Black History Month proclamation. And then we have an addition of closed session. It will be for economic development, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11A4. And then we do have one clarification or correction on the agenda, which is item 6.1 under Appointments Before the Board. Instead of R, S, and H making the presentation on the transportation master plan, that will be Director Matthew Todd.
If you'll switch that order to first be under 5.1, proclamation, and then 5.2, the certificate of recognition.
And then 5.3 will be?
The recognition for presented for.
Okay.
Marvin, we did a little keeping some stuff on the down-low, so we just added this today. So it's not on your agenda. Make sure your family's around 7:00.
Want him a cats and dogs, too?
The cats and dogs, too.
Yeah, yeah.
If you got them muzzled.
[laughter]
Okay. So with those changes, and that's it, right?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Okay. We then have one public hearing on the installment financing agreement for the project that we've been talking about for probably a month regarding the borrowing of $8.8 million to finance the LED lighting, the controls systems, and the air purification filtration We then have a public hearing, oh, that is the public hearing, I'm sorry. Administrative matters, if you'll please tee those up.
Absolutely, thank you Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from the National Balloon Rally Charities Incorporated for approval of a 35-foot wide easement at the fairgrounds and adjacent park properties. And this is something that we have discussed and have given information to the board that's in the packet. The National Balloon Rally Charities is interested in purchasing some property that is directly behind the fairgrounds property and adjacent to county property. In order for them to move forward and secure financing, they need an easement that gets them access to Murdoch Road, and this is a 35-foot easement that we are granting them. What's in the agreement in here is an easement for access, so they are not purchasing landlocked property, so they have access to their property. But this property, once they close on the property, the intent is to have all of the property master-planned and redesigned to determine best access, ingress and egress to the property collectively. So in this agreement is if they were able, or if they are able to secure separate access, ingress and egress, that this would go away at that point. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Valdez has definitely briefed up on this, if you have any additional questions.
With the property they're buying, are they, to do the balloon rally there, are they going to be using our property, too?
What we have talked about, and this will have to be something that will be fleshed out once they secure the property and close on the property, is to do some joint programming for large events. For example, where we could, if they have a large event, and maybe they could park on some of our property and vice versa, things of that nature, with them being adjacent, just to work together and be good neighbors, so to speak.
I know it's getting bigger and bigger.
If I may add to what Ms. Jones said, that Balloon Fest does also have an interest in, they may need additional easements in this area as far as utilities, storm drainage, that sort of thing. That request came late last week, and I did ask them to hold that till a later date when we know how the site's going to be master-planned, because I don't know that you all were interested or that was ever part of the discussion for going in this location. And those are things that are a little bit more permanent to have to re, or costly to relocate. So for right now, the purpose of the easement is just to provide access.
The concept is to be able to leverage the properties and the resources of the groups in that area. And generally speaking, you've got the county, and now the national, or the balloon fest group contiguous to one another. I think they're buying about 80 some odd acres.
E5.
And then you have Barium, which continues to have a vested interest in what's going on. And then you have the town of Troutman, which is, you know, joined at the hip. So the idea is to create, leveraging those different resources that everyone brings to the table, so that we don't duplicate expenses, and that we create an entire area that can be used for year-round events, indoors and outdoors. And so we're excited about the progress, and the easement, as has been discussed, is there to give them a legal access, but its exact placement will be determined based on the master plan. But that'll remain there on the deed unless they get alternate ingress and egress.
Does, per our earlier conversations at 7:00, does Beth need to elaborate, or you a little bit, that that is just to get the closing done and all the other details will be worked out?
Oh, yeah, this is just the...
I think there was some misunderstanding, as we talked about before, from people thinking that they wouldn't have to meet any other potential codes and all that, that would be required to do whatever permanent access they would have. But this is just for closing the property.
Yeah.
And I have reached out and shared that information, and I think everything is fine from that perspective.
Good, well then, okay.
All right, that's on our consent agenda, so any further discussion or questions? Consent?
Consent.
May it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next two items are continuation items from the public hearing that we had at our last meeting on the second. And Mr. Todd is here to answer any questions, but I will say both of these were property rezonings that we had public hearings on, and we were required to leave that open for 24 hours for additional comments. And we did not receive any additional comments on either matter, but I'm gonna, Mr. Todd is saying no. So we did not receive any additional comments on either one of the rezonings. But he is here, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I'm good with both, consent?
Consent for items 8.2 and 8.3?
Consent.
Consent?
Oh, we probably do have to read the, do we have to read the motion?
Statement.
In the record? I think you're correct, we do have to read that motion.
We'll do those two at 7:00.
Okay. Okay, we'll do those by motion, then.
Okay.
And who wants to do 8.2?
I can do the first one. I'll do number two.
All right, and a second.
For the Clifton Barber Binge on West Monroe Highway, I'll be glad to.
It's highlighted in here, yep.
All right, I'll find that in a bit.
Go on to 8.4.
Okay, 8.4 is a request from Planning and Development for approval to abandon state maintenance for a portion of SR 2630 known as Ebony Circle, and Mr. Todd is here to make this presentation.
Matthew, how are you doing?
Oh, doing good, good evening. The, this request, we don't see these too often, but this is a request made by, I say, ICATS along with some of the adjacent property owners out there, to abandon state maintenance on Ebony Circle. And you can see in your packet where Ebony Circle comes off of Mount Olive. They're down into the county property and past about three or four other private properties. That's a section that's been requested to the state for abandonment of state maintenance. And that process, basically, there's an application with DOT, they get submitted to DOT, and then they forward the application on to us for approval from the commissioner. So this one, again, is brought on by ICATS, a request from them to abandon that maintenance. The right-of-way on the section on the county property will still be, still exist, but just the maintenance of that will no longer be by DOT.
So who will be responsible for the maintenance?
It'd be the private property owners along that section.
And, I mean, this is an unusual request.
Yeah.
What's the background? What's the rationale?
I believe it, part of it is driven, and I was hoping, okay?
If you recall, we've had two separate incidents. This is going into the ICATS property where we have our ICATS department, and we've had two separate incidents where we've had catalytic converters stolen from our ICATS buses and vans. And what we are wanting to do is put a fence there at that property boundary to keep people from coming in, because it is a dead-end road, it does dead-end at that department, and we're having theft.
And you can't cut off a state, right?
Correct. But what we can do is end it before that dead-end and that cul-de-sac. And we would be accepting responsibility for maintaining, but we are the property owner. So we will be putting up a fence, so we can better secure that property and protect assets.
Not cutting anybody else off.
It's not cutting anybody else off, no.
It looks like on the diagram that it includes these three residences.
It does. There are a few residents that have signed off on the application, acknowledging the request.
So...
Do they know what they're signing?
I mean, you know, have we made any kind of commitments about maintaining that portion between Mount Olive Road and where we would be putting the barricade or the gate? I mean, if there's potholes, the state normally fills them.
Correct.
And now if there are potholes?
The reason that is out of policy is going north. State, right, and, 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 and,[1796.15]
The software will allow the public to search by keyword and not have to go through a folder page by page or reel of microfilm image by image. Grant funds will also be used to purchase a data repository to store the information. We have been working closely with Ardel, with ITS on this project for both the repository and how we would digitize and upload the material. The microfilm records will be available inside and outside of the library through the library's website, and the family files will only be available through the library's website inside the library due to copyright. By digitizing these records, we'll be preserving materials, making items easily searchable with OCR software, reducing the amount of time spent by both the public and staff, and expanding access and reducing barriers. The deadline to apply for this grant is March 1st.
Besides the keyword search, how are these files organized in terms of folders or?
Right now, the, the family files are by last name.
Are what?
Are by last name. And then the church and local history files are by church names or local historical events. Then we, the microfilm reels are just there, there by what type of material is loaded on the reel from the State Archives.
So if you've got somebody that comes in and is looking for something specific, they're just, you know, the keywords will get them where they need to go. But if you've got somebody that's, you know, sort of browsing, you're going to have a way that they don't have to go through a mass. It's focused and they can.
So it would be similar for, one of the things we had discussed while we've been researching this project is a lot of times, there's a lot of cross-reference of family files, like you would have the Morrison file, but Morrison information could also be in some other file that you did not, you weren't aware of. So by having the keyword search, you would be able to find the name and all the different, the various files that it was located in. So you'd have, you would most likely have access to more information, additional information than just the one particular file.
But if you're doing a topical inquiry, like, okay, let's talk about the original landowners in this area or church, churches in the area or whatever, you wouldn't have to go in with a keyword. You could go in to look at churches of Iredell County and whatever.
So the OCR software will scan all the words of the page. And so any word that you put in that it finds, it would pull up all of those matches.
Well, that sounds great. Any other questions, comments, consent?
Consent.
My next item is in reference to our three-year Spectrum contract. I'm requesting approval of a new three-year contract with Spectrum for internet services at the State'sville and Troutman libraries. I completed a call for proposals through the Universal Service Administration Company in conjunction with FY22 funding for E-Rate services. Spectrum is our current provider and continues to be our most cost-effective choice. In fact, the new three-year contract will reflect a decrease in the monthly cost for the same service we currently have. State'sville's monthly costs will go from $1,189 to $899 per month, and Troutman's costs will go from $600 to $350 per month. The three-year contract for internet service in conjunction with E-Rate will allow for predictable fixed costs through FY24. And Dean Lael has reviewed the contract, the terms of service, made necessary changes, and reviewed Spectrum's revisions.
Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
My final item is in reference to E-Rate.
Okay, Marvin.
I am requesting approval to apply for E-Rate discounts through the Federal Communications Commission's E-Rate program for FY22. The cost for internet service in FY22 for all three locations of the Iredell County Public Library will be $15,660. E-Rate funds 60% of the cost of internet service. Therefore, E-Rate discounts will cover $9,396, and the library will include the remaining 40% or $6,264 in our budget request. State'sville and Troutman will receive internet service through the Spectrum, through Spectrum with their new three-year contract, and Harmony will continue to receive month-to-month service through Yadto. And the deadline to apply is March 25th.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you for continuing to look at these. Job.
Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
The next item is a request from Finance Department, and Ms. Cheek is here to make this request for approval of an audit contract with Martin Starnes and Associates CPAs for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Each year, we're required by state statute to have an audit performed by an external auditing company. We have been using Martin Starnes and Associates for 16 years, but a little background history for the new ones. Two years ago, I went back out for bid on audit contracts, and Martin Starnes again was awarded the bid. So we have kind of shored things up with them in the last few years. The amount of the contract is $67,300. And then we have so many programs in the Health Department and DSS that are federal and state, and they have to have special extra work done on them. So they do charge $3,000 a program. They give us the first several programs at $5,000, and then they add on. We've never had to go above our base price. But there is a lot of extra work that's involved in that, so that's an extra piece to the audit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So they do the special extra work and you do the extra special work?
Yes, we do. We provide all the paper for the extra special work.
Any questions? Okay, consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from administration for approval of departmental strategic goals, and Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to present those.
In November, all of the departments submitted strategic goals that they plan to work on over the next year or, in most of the cases, over the next couple of years. And these goals tie directly to the county's strategic plan and to the commissioner identified objectives. Administration staff and myself sat down and we reviewed all of the goals, and we worked with the department heads to answer any questions and to make any necessary changes. And then in January, all of the department heads met with the task forces and presented their goals and gave the task force members the opportunity to ask questions and to make any changes again. So all of the goals that you have in your packet tonight were approved by the task force, and the budget team will use these as we go through the budget to help make any decisions. So tonight, we are asking for your final approval on these strategic goals.
Well, I think each task force has been through several hours of discussions and have wire brushed these in the various areas. Many of them are continuations of previous goals that they've been continuing to work on. Some of them, you probably noticed, were impacted by COVID and a lot of the changes in terms of service delivery as a result of the restrictions that they've had to operate under. Does anyone have any particular questions about, you know, would you like to raise any particular items that I think should be for the good of the order? Or do we want to proceed forward?
Forward.
And I appreciate this as a point of reference. So if I wasn't in a task force meeting because it wasn't underneath one of my categories, if you will, this gives me a point of reference to go back to and say, hey, this is what was covered. And moving forward is very, very helpful. And a lot of time was spent, and I appreciate all of the work that went into this with each department and with all of y'all. This is quite inclusive and looking excited toward the future targets as well. So thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments there? Marvin?
None.
Okay. Then consent for the entire packet?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Caroline, I appreciate your being the cat herder on all this and the overall 30,000-foot view to pull it all together. This really is the sort of a precondition to our entire budget process. It links our long-term goals and our short-term goals to our budget process, both in terms of just next year's budget, which we'll be getting into heavily over the next three months, as well as our long-term capital improvement plan, and as well the other departments that have longer-term budget requests and commitments. So I want to thank all the staff. A lot of work goes into this and a lot of thought. So I appreciate, again, all your work.
Absolutely. And if I could just add, there are two critical pieces that are necessary for us to be, to really dig in and begin the budget process. Approval of these goals, which gives us really good direction to make sure that each department is going in the right direction that the board would like for them to go into, and then our retreat that we just had this past weekend. So those are the two critical pieces that staff need in order to start preparing the budget. So thank you to the commissioners for your time and painstaking hours that you spent with us going over each individual goal with the departments and then the retreat time because that gives us really good direction so we could start with the budget.
I can tell you, I enjoyed my task force. I learned more with those guys that I met with and the things that go on in Iredell County. It's very impressive, and we've got some great people.
I'm glad to hear you say that. Thank you. It's, sometimes it's not always an enjoyable process, so I'm glad you enjoyed it.
All of mine were. I don't know about the rest of theirs, but mine were. So I got the good ones.
Okay, the final item on the, for administrative matters is item 8.10, and that's a request from Tax Administration for approval of January 2021 refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Okay, any questions, comments, consent?
Consent.
Consent.
I believe that takes care of our consent agenda, and we just have the two items, 8.2 and 8.3, to roll over to the seven o'clock hour for motions and no actual hearings. And that brings us to item nine, which is appointments to the Child Futility Prevention Team.
This one is, we had a resignation on this, this team, so this is an announcement of an at-large position on that one. And then if you remember, we did an announcement last meeting, and that is on for appointments. But this is an at-large position that we're announcing for the Child Futility Prevention Team.
And then we move, I misspoke the announcement first, then item 10 is the appointments, which includes, interestingly enough, one to the Child Futility Prevention Team as well as the Troutman Board of Adjustments ETJ.
Yes, the Child Futility Prevention Team, that is Amy Isley, and she has served before. And she is the only individual, I think, that applied for that. Again, that one was an at-large appointment as well, an at-large seat. And then the other one is the Troutman Board of Adjustment. We had one individual that applied for that, and Troutman voted and agreed for this appointment as well and is passing this forward to the board for your approval for that ETJ appointment for the Troutman Board of Adjustment.
Okay, any questions? All right. We'll divvy those up later. Item nine, no unfinished business anybody's aware of? This is a public comment period meeting. Any new business that anybody's aware of? About a preview on the county manager's report?
The only thing that I have to present, and Ms. Henson has done an amazing job giving you an update regarding COVID-19, and that's, it's a two-page printout that you have before you, and I was just going to give you a quick update. But as of yesterday, we have 15,659 positive cases. 30 individuals are in the hospital, and unfortunately, we've had 188 deaths in Iredell County. We gave you a chart to show the vaccinations. Total first doses, we've had, and you can look at the bar graphs, the county, again, we have four providers that are currently vaccinating. We have several more that have been approved, and as they receive dosages, then they will begin vaccinating as well. But if you look at a total, this gives you your total count for first doses and second doses, and then those that are done by the Health Department, and then those that are done by the county. Then this is data, the next chart is data that the commissioners have asked for and that we have been able to dig into. And this is, this shows you the vaccination based on race, and this identifies those marginalized populations and how are we doing regarding vaccinating those populations. And we gave you these percentages, and we also gave you the percent of population that's represented in Iredell County, so you can kind of look how we're doing in that vaccination rate. We are also working diligently with other providers and other partners throughout our county, and I know that Iredell Memorial is doing the same thing to try to address those difficult-to-reach populations and partner. I know that Iredell Memorial has reached out to some churches that are sponsoring vaccination clinics and things of that nature, and we're going to continue to do that to try to make sure that we reach as many people as possible to get this vaccine. If you look, we've also broken out the doses that have been administered and looked at that by age. Again, the 65-plus is certainly the biggest piece of the pie, but we do have other ages that have received vaccine, and those are primarily your healthcare workers and those individuals that are, were in that first tier that have direct contact with those COVID-related patients that are healthcare workers and first responders, things of that nature. We continue to work with individuals on our vaccination clinic, and we have had a lot of partners, and we certainly couldn't do it without our partners. They are helping us with our first-dose clinics and our second-dose clinics. And that's key, to continue to have those individuals to help us all the way from traffic control to, you know, to helping set up and tear down. It is a lot of work to, to set up and prepare for these vaccination events. And then, of course, our partners with location. So we've had clinics at several different locations. Most recent, Mazepa, we have found that Mazepa Park has been a great location in the southern end, so we're continuing to use that. Thank you to Mooresville, allowing us to use that park for that vaccination clinic. We've also used North Iredell High School. We've used Hebron Church. So we've used a lot of different locations, and we're continuing to look for additional locations that, that can serve larger clinics. So we certainly appreciate that. And we're using temporary contract staffing as well regarding nurses to help give vaccinations and things of that nature. But there's a lot of information in this packet that Ms. Henson has put together for you that hopefully will address any concerns or questions that you may have, and we'll continue to give you updates, and then she will be here at the next meeting to give you an in-person update.
Well, it's very good to see that the at-risk and minority populations have, which have been a concern in North Carolina as far as under, the percentage of vaccinations have, are exceeding their percentages slightly. And that goes, I think that's a result of a lot of churches that have responded to our Health Department's outreach to put together. our Health Department's outreach to put together packets of information as well as getting initial information from individuals and helping put it into a format that can then be entered into the system. You know, we do have a fair number of folks that, you know, do not have access to computers or the internet, and even making phone calls is a challenge for some. So I think we are going to reach a point where we're going to have to almost be very proactive and have teams going around. And, you know, we've seen how effective our EMS's Community Paramedic Program has been, and I think at some point, the initial crush will start to taper off, and we'll have to be actively seeking out folks that haven't heard or just haven't gotten plugged in for whatever reason, so that they can get protected as well.
Absolutely.
The concern that people have about, you know, the variants, that's a work in progress as far as understanding the impact on, both in terms of the symptoms as well as the transmissibility and whether or not the vaccines are effective against that. And all the preliminary information is, is that the vaccines continue to be effective. There may be some slight reduction in terms of effectiveness against transmission, but all of the data that I've seen so far, when it comes to the really important pieces of preventing hospitalizations and preventing death, that the current vaccines are effective in terms of dealing with the new variants, and you're just going to continue to get variants all, you know, for the rest of time. So who knows what, how frequently we'll have to take booster shots, or it's going to be like the flu, where every year, you know, you ought to have a vaccine, but it's just part of the new normal that we'll have to get used to in order to be able to resume our normal activities as much as we can. But in the meantime, because people, even when they're vaccinated, need to continue to mask and to maintain social distancing until we get to a point where we have a large enough body of folks in the county vaccinated that we will have arrived at a herd immunity type of situation. And at least for the U, I'm not sure if the UK or the South African variant, but folks who have had COVID before do not have protection against being reinfected by these variants.
Correct.
So the vaccines do give a level, a much higher level of protection evidently. And so stay tuned, more to follow as they develop more in terms of research. But the surest way to protect yourself is to be vaccinated.
And continue to wear your face covering and wash your hands. It's important to note, the vaccine's 95% effective, and that's a great percentage, but there is still about a 5%. Now, what they are saying is, even if you've been vaccinated and you do get it, it would be a much milder case, but there is, I mean, it's not 100% effective, so people need to understand, even after you've been vaccinated, it's important, as Chairman Mallory said, until we can get as many people vaccinated as possible, you still need to wear your face covering and wash your hands and socially distance.
Yeah, and in that respect, it's not much different. It is different from the flu, but in that respect, expectations that when people get the flu vaccine, it's not that, okay, I'm golden, you know, I'm not going to get the flu. You get the vaccine because you know that if you get it, it's going to be a milder case.
Correct. Absolutely.
Anything further on the county manager's report?
No, sir. That's all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, and at this time, I don't have the full statutory recitation other than subsection A4.
I have it for you. It's North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, subsection 4.
Yeah, that.
That's it.
All right. We will now go into closed session.